Welcome to I A C. So today we have to discuss target S S C, C G L, C H S L, pure maths session two. Okay, question number one, if A square minus B square sine theta plus two A B cos theta equal to A square plus B square, then find the value of tan theta. Whenever you are observing sine theta with cos theta. Sin theta with cos theta if you observe, then immediately you have to remember the identity, what is the identity? Sin squared theta plus cos squared theta equal to one. So my own cases discussed just so different cases session one low case matter. Sin theta, cos theta, cos theta, sine theta with alternate symbol. A square plus B square equal to X square plus Y square. Right, second method, so second case whenever if it is with the sine and cos, sine and cos. Immediately that question we have to solve by using sine squared theta plus cos squared theta equal to one method. The problem we are getting very easy, okay? So what we know sine squared theta plus cos squared theta equal to one. So first what I am doing means the right side value of make it equal to one. Right side value only one just now, okay? If I do, I am dividing with the A square plus B square, A square plus B square thirty, both sides I am dividing. So if we divide, what will come? A square minus B square by, A square minus B square by, A square plus B square, sine theta plus two A B by, A square plus B square, cos theta equal to how much? One, so right side value one. So right side value one just what we know? Sin squared theta plus cos squared theta equal to one or not? Sin squared theta plus cos squared theta one. But sine squared theta, cos squared, this is a sine squared theta, it is sine squared theta and this is cos squared theta. Sin squared theta already one sine theta is there means what is the remaining value? The remaining value must be equal to, the previous value must be equal to sine theta or not? So sine theta equal to what happens? Sin theta equal to, sine theta equal to what happens? A square minus B square by, A square plus B square. So if it is sine theta, then it becomes sine squared theta. Similarly, but it is cos theta, it is. Then only it becomes cos squared theta. Cos squared theta, the previous value must be equal to cos theta or not? So what is cos theta? Cos theta is two A B by, A square plus B square, right? So sine theta, cos theta, then easily we can find tan theta. What is tan theta? Sin theta by cos theta, that is, A square minus B square by, A square plus B square by, two A B by, A square plus B square, right? Cancel, so what we are getting? A square minus B square by, two A B. So what is tan theta? Tan theta is, A square minus B square by, two A B, right? So option C is the right answer, okay? Right, then, question number two, yes, C again. Sin theta plus cos theta, cos theta plus sine theta equal to root two cos theta and cos theta minus sine theta equal to how much? Y. So already what we discussed? A sine theta plus B cos theta equal to, A sine theta plus B cos theta equal to X and A cos theta minus B sine theta equal to Y. So what is the condition we discussed? A square plus B square equal to how much? X square plus Y square. Same thing here, then what happens? One, 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 one means, so one square plus, plus one square equal to root two cos theta whole square plus Y square. Right, so what is Y square? Y square is two minus two cos squared theta. Two into one minus cos squared theta. Two into one minus cos squared theta means, two sine squared theta. Right, so Y square equal to two sine theta means what is Y? Y equal to, so root two sine theta, right? Sorry, sine squared, root two sine theta. So what is the value of Y we are getting? Y equal to how much? Root two, Y square equal to two sine squared theta means Y equal to how much? Root two sine theta, so root two sine theta is the right answers. Option B is the right answer, okay? Right, then, what is the value of eight cos ten, cos twenty, cos forty? Actually, one formula we will discuss. Cos, whenever cos is in multiple factor. Two formulas we have to remember. One is cos three A formula, second one is this one, what is that? Cos A into, cos A into, cos, two A into, cos, two square A into and so on, cos, two power N minus one A. Cos A into, cos two A into, cos two square A and so on, cos two power N minus V. Then what is the formula we discussed? Sin two power N A by, sin two power N A by, two power N sine A. So this is the formula we discussed in classroom. And is sin two power N A by, two power sine A. So right, same. Eight, cos ten into cos twenty into cos forty. If this is A, it is A, it is empty, two A, this is how much? Four A and two square A. So same, A, two A, two square A. So what we can write? So that is eight into sine two power N, sine two power N. Two power N, N means how many times? Three times, that means sine two cube into A. What is A? A is how much? Ten by, two cube into sine ten. So two cube, two cube, eight cancel. So sine two cube means eight, eight into ten means sine eighty by, sine ten. So what is sine eighty? Sin eighty how we can write? Cos ten and right, so what is cos by sine? That is cot ten. So what is answer? Cot ten is the right answer, cot ten or tan eighty, both are same. So option C is the right answer. Cot ten or not, tan eighty or not, both are same. So if A plus B equal to ninety degrees, tan equal to cot, cot. So tan eighty, cot ten, both are always same. So whenever you are observing in this form, E form. Cos with multiple factor, so immediately that formula we have to remember. Or else, the second formula we have to remember, what is the second formula we have to remember? Cos three A formula, what cos three A formula? Cos three A formula is four cos sixty minus A into, cos A into, cos sixty plus A. E two formulas. Whenever you are observing cos is multiple factor, so the first formula this one and this is the second formula. So these are the two formulas we have to remember. Okay now, right. Then, next one, C. If one plus sine theta by one minus sine theta is P square by Q square, then what is secant theta? So again, it's a trigonometric equation or not? If it is a trigonometric equation, we can assume the angle or not? Yes, I am assuming theta equal to zero degrees, anything we can assume. But remember, so three conditions you have to follow. Question undefined. Options undefined. Options unique. Right, so I am taking theta equal to zero. What is sine zero? Sin zero is zero, sine zero is zero. That is one equal to what we are getting? P square by Q square. And what we are getting? P square equal to Q square and P equal to Q, we are getting a condition. What is the condition we are getting? P equal to Q. P equal to Q. What is secant zero? Secant zero is how much? One, so now substitute P equal to Q. P Q substitute. Which answer we are getting? So see here, one by two into, what is this? P square plus Q square by, P Q. That is, one by two into, what is P square? P and Q both are same, that is, two P square by, P square. So that we are, here we are getting one or not? So exactly option B is the right answer. P square, Q square, two P power four by, this is two P square. So this is not, and. So option B is the right answer. So. So. Anything you can substitute. But follow the three conditions. Three conditions. Okay, right, next one. Which one of the smallest? So session one, first session. So. Power numbers. Power fractions. What you have to do? We have to make the powers equal. So what here, this is how we can write? This is twelve power, one by six. This is four power, one by three. Five power, one by four and three power, one by two. Right, so what is the common L C M, L C M of, L C M of, L C M of, two, three, four and six. What is the L C M? That is twelve, L C M. So we have to make twelve. Two power, twelve power, sixteen to how many times twelve? So two power, twelve power, two whole power, one by twelve. So two cancel, so one by six. Similarly, this, four power, four whole power, one by twelve, yes? Similarly, five power, three whole power, one by twelve and three power, six whole power, one by twelve. Right, in that, now what we have to know? What smallest value you want? Smallest. Twelve square means one forty-four, this is six, this is two fifty-six and this is one twenty-five and three power six. Three power six and three, nine, twenty-seven, twenty-seven into twenty-seven and seven twenty-nine. Which one is the smallest? So one twenty-five means fourth root of five. So fourth root of five is the smallest one. So option B is the right answer, okay? So we have to make the powers equal. Powers need equal. That is very, very important, okay? And then, next one, C. So two power X plus Y equal to one and three power four X plus Y equal to one by twenty-seven. What is the value of X Y? X Y value. So how we can write twenty-one? One. Sorry, twenty-five whole power, zero. Any power zero is always one. And one by twenty-seven, how we can write? Three power minus three. So three power minus three is one by twenty-seven or not? If the powers are equal, if the bases are equal, then the powers are equal or not? Then what is the condition here? X plus Y, here we are getting zero and here, four X plus Y, we are getting how much? Minus three, now cancel. So what we are getting? Minus three X equal to three. So X equal to how much? Minus one. If X equal to minus one means Y equal to how much? Zero, right? Why? Because X plus Y is how much? Sorry, one. X plus Y is how much? Zero. Zero. Minus one plus one, so X is minus one and Y is one, means what is X Y? X Y is how much? Minus one, so option B is the right answer. Okay, so simple two equation. Okay now, right. The next one, C. The expression square root of ten plus two or two root six minus two root fifteen minus two root ten. So directly, directly we can tell. Option A is the right answer. Root two into root three. Root five into root three. Root two into root five. Two A B, two B C, two C A formula. And five into three K and two into five K, okay? So minus. Minus. Two into three K plus. Two into three. Six. Six. Minus. Six. Plus two root six. Plus two root six. So three places. What is the answer directly? We can tell, root three plus root two minus. So what is the formula we have to remember? A plus B plus C whole square formula. What is A plus B plus C whole square formula? A square plus B square plus C square plus, two A B plus two B C plus two C A. Now see, how we can write this one? Square root of ten. Root two whole square plus, root three whole square plus, root five whole square. Now. Plus two into, plus two into six. Root two into root three, right? Minus, plus two into fifteen. Five into three. Five into three. Root three into minus root five. Similarly, plus two into, root two into minus root five. Five. Minus five root five whole square. So it is in the form of A plus B plus C whole square. Square root of, root two plus root three minus root five whole square. Both are cancelled, then what we are getting? Root two plus root three minus root five. So option A is the right answer. Six. Two, three, six. Two, three K plus. Two into three. So directly we can go with option A. Okay? Example directly. So the procedure we are seeing here, A plus, it is in the form of A plus B plus C whole square formula. Okay, right? If three X minus two Y is two, two X plus three Y is five is two six, then what is the value of cube root of X plus cube root of Y by, cube root of X minus cube root of Y whole square? Right, see, what is given? Three X minus two Y by, two X plus three Y equal to how much? Five by six. How now? Right, now if we cross multiply, what will come? Eighteen X minus twelve Y equal to, ten X plus fifteen Y. How now? Right, now what will come here? Eight X equal to, eight X equal to twenty-seven Y, that means what is X by Y? X by Y is twenty-seven by eight. If you divide with cube root by, what will come? Cube root of, cube root of X by Y plus one by, cube root of, X by Y minus one whole square. So if I numerator and denominator, if I divide with the cube root of Y. What is cube root of X by Y? That is three by two. So in place of cube root of X by Y, what we can write? Three by two. What we can write? Three by two plus one by, three by two minus one whole square. Five by two. So five by two by, so one by two and then, right? One by two whole square. Two, two cancel, so five square is how much? Twenty-five, so option C is the right answer. C and the right answer, okay? Right, and then, next one. See, P equal to, two minus M by, if P equal to two minus M by one plus M, then what is the value of? One by P plus one by, two P plus one by P square. P square minus one. P plus one into, P minus one. Right, P plus one, P minus, P plus one. P square minus one. Two P, two P plus one. The cancel, one, one cancel, so finally what we are getting? Three P by, P square minus one. So what is the value of? Three P by, P square minus one. Three P by, P square minus one. P equal to. Two minus M by, two minus M by, one plus M. Simple. M no value. Zero. What happens? One. Two. Two. If you are taking a two, two value. P value zero. But P value zero. So then also. Right? M two. Zero, one, two. Possibilities and multiple options. If M equal to. If M equal to three, P equal to how much? Two minus three by, one plus two, that is how much? One plus three, that is how much? Minus one by four. And P equal to. Minus one by four. Now substitute here, so that is three into minus one by four by P square. One by sixteen minus one. Minus three by four by, or, minus three by four into, into sixteen by minus fifteen. How now? Minus sixteen, minus fifteen, minus, minus cancel, four ones, four fours, three ones, three fives. So what we are getting? Four by five we are getting. So. So four by five. Now check your option by substituting P, by substituting M equal to three. M three substitute. Four by five. M three substitute. So. Three substitute. Four. Four into minus one by, here. Three. Two, three, just six, five. And minus four by five. So M plus one into, yes, option C is the right answer. One minus two. Four into minus one by, minus five. Four by five exactly, so option C is the right answer. How now? Two minus M. Simplify. It is very tough. But instead of that. Value. Then problem becomes very easy. Problems. Okay, right, next one. X equal to root three by two, then find the value of, one plus X by, one plus root, one plus X plus one minus X by, one minus root, one minus X. Roots find out. Roots find out. With the technique, how to find one plus X, root X? Square root of, one plus X. Root three by two. Square root of, two plus root three by. Square roots find out. So root. What is should be there? Two. We have to multiply with root two by root two. Square root of, four plus two root three by four, two root three by four. Then, after getting two. Three. Factors change such that four. Multiply. Three. Add. Three into one. Three and three plus one is how much? Four, sorry. If you observe here, if you observe here. Sorry, three, three, three factors and three into one. So three into one and three plus one is exactly four or not? So what is the square root? How we can write? Root three plus root one, that means root one means one by four square root is two. So what is the square root of, square root of root one plus X? Root three plus one by two. Similarly, root of one minus X means, root three minus one by two. Now substitute. Similarly, what is one plus X? One plus X. What is one plus X? One plus root three by two. Two plus root three by, two plus root three by two. So that is one by X. Root one by X. So that is, two plus root three by, two plus root three by two by, one plus. What is root one plus X? Root three plus, root three plus one by, similarly. Minus. Two minus root three by two by, one minus root three minus one by two. Now we have to simplify. Two plus root three by, two, two cancel. Two plus one, three plus root three plus. Two minus root three by, two minus root three by. Two minus root three plus one. Three minus three, so this value you have to find. So. Two plus root three into, so plus becomes. Minus by square difference, that is how much? Nine minus three is how much? Six, right? Similarly, two minus root three into, so minus becomes plus. By six. So directly total I am writing. Then the value is a common factor, so common value, so I am six. Multiply. I am multiplying three to six and minus two root three plus two root three means plus root three minus root three into root three, three. Next here, three to six plus. Two root three minus three root three. Minus root three minus three by six. Root three, root three cancel, six, six cancel, so six by six is how much? One, so what is the answer we are getting? One, so option B is the right answer. So only simplification we have to do. Okay now, right. Then, question number eleven, eleventh question. Two circles having equal area thirty-eight point five centimeter square centimeter intersect each other at a point A and B respectively. If A B is four point two, then what is the distance between the centers? Rindu circles intersect. Two circles are intersecting each other, both are equal circles, intersecting at A and B. A B, they can intersect. Then what is the distance between the centers? Let it be P and Q are the centers. What is P Q? If A B is how much? A B is how much? Four point two, and four point two is two point one, two point one. Let it be, this is M. So, four point two parts. Both are of same radius. It is. Both are same radius. What is the distance between them? What is area formula? Area formula is pi R square is how much? Thirty-eight point five, that is twenty-two by seven into R square equal to how much? Three eighty-five by ten. Eleven to, eleven, threes, fives. So, two, seven, sorry, five, seven, five, twos. R square equal to. Seven into seven and seven into seven by, two into two. That is R equal to how much? Seven by two means how much? Three point five, so what is R? R is how much? Three point five, three point five. So here, what is the triangle we are observing? The right angle triangle we are observing, what is that? Twenty-one, thirty-five. If you divide with seven, what will come here? Three. Five, so what is the triplet code we know? Four, so three, four, five, multiply with the seven, what will come? Three, four, five, multiply with seven, what will come? So twenty-one, twenty-eight, thirty-five. So twenty-one, thirty-five is there means what is the other value? Two point eight, but this side, two point eight means this is also how much? Two point eight, therefore what is P Q? P Q is how much? Five point six and the two point eight, two point eight. So what is center between them is? Five point six, option A is the right answer. Simple, a right angle triangle, triangle combination. Triplet codes. So by substituting the triplet codes, we will get the right answer, okay? Right. The next one, C. The side of B C of triangle A B C is extended to point D, okay? One line is extended up to D. If angle A C D is one twenty-six and angle B is one by nine of angle A, then what is angle B? When in a triangle. In triangle A B C, in triangle A B C, what he did? The B C is extended to, the B C is extended to point D. So B C. Okay, right? A C D is telling one twenty-six. Angle B is five by nine of angle A. Angle B. And if angle A is X means angle B is how much? Five by nine X. Then find angle B. Five by nine X. Yes, we know exterior angle, what exterior angle property? What is angle A C D? Angle A C D equal to? The exterior angle is always equal to some of the opposite interior angles, that is angle A plus angle B. That is, one twenty-six equal to, X plus five by nine X. That is, one twenty-six equal to how much? Fourteen X by nine, fourteen ones, fourteen nines, right? Forty-nine, so X by nine equal to how much? Eighty-one. X by nine. Five X by nine, so five X by nine is, sorry. Five X by nine is how much? Nine into five, that is how much? Forty-five degrees, so what is angle B? Angle B is how much? Forty-five degrees, option A is the right answer. Okay, so. So what is five by nine X? Five by nine X is how much? Forty-five degrees, okay? So directly property four used. Triangle property for exterior angle property. Right, then, A B C is an isosceles triangle. Which triangle? This is isosceles triangle, an isosceles triangle, two sides are equal, A B equal to A C. A B equal to A C, two triangles, the side B A, the side B A is produced to D. Such that, A B equal to A D. A B, A D. Equal. A B, A D, both are equal. Right, Rindu equal. So A B equal to A D, then if angle A B C equal to thirty degrees. A B C. Thirty degrees, then find B C D. What is B C D? B C D angle. This angle is how much? So this is thirty, mean this angle is also how much? Thirty. Why? Because A B C is which triangle? Isosceles triangle. But thirty, thirty, what is this angle? Sixty, but sixty, again it is an isosceles triangle or not? In isosceles triangle, corresponding angles are equal, so sixty. Remaining one twenty. Sixty. So what is angle B C D? Very simple, what is angle B C D? B C D equal to how much? Sixty plus thirty, that is how much? Ninety degrees, so what is angle B C D? Angle B C D equal to ninety degrees. Thirty, thirty means the exterior angle is sixty, but it is sixty, multi isosceles triangle. Sixty, sixty. Thirty thirty means the exterior angle is sixty, but it's sixty, maldi isosceles triangle ante sixty sixty and equal in a triangle utundi. So idi sixty thirty ante, what is B C D? Ninety, right? So B C D angle is how much? Ninety degrees, okay? Right, next one, see. If D and E are the points on A B and A C of a triangle A B C such that D E is parallel to B C. D E is parallel to B C. In a triangle, parallel, in a triangle, parallel means immediately what you have to remember? Basic proportionality theorem we have to remember, Thales theorem we have to remember. Basic proportionality theorem or Thales theorem we have to remember antukda auna? So D E is parallel to B C anagane, so but what is given? A D equal to X, D B equal to X minus three and A E equal to X plus three and A C equal to X minus two. What Thales theorem is telling? Top length by bottom length and this side also top length by bottom length, both are always equal. Yipudu alla untai, equal ga untai, ene chukunadu auna? So A D by manav three points nejchukundam, basic proportionality, then what are the three points we discuss? Top by bottom equal to top by bottom. Second one, top length by this side total length equal to this side top length by total length equal to parallel lines ratio. And third point, two triangles here observing, both are similar triangles, ene chukundam. So in basic proportionality, so that the point number one, what is point number one? A D by top by bottom, what is the bottom? D B equal to, that side also top, top is A E by bottom, what is the bottom? A C, so basic proportionality theorem, right? So parallel, in a triangle, parallel ante, immediately first what you have to remember? Basic proportional theorem only we have. So A D anta? X by X minus three equal to X minus three by X minus two. So what is the value of X? X anta? Hmm, chonde cross multiply chendhi emosni? So X into, X into X minus two equal to, ante ne sari? X, X minus three, X minus, X plus three, yeah, sorry, sorry. Hmm, values kattige chesama? A D X, D B X minus three, A E X plus three, yeah, okay. A D X plus, sorry. One minute, minus odumisayangada, mali vasnana, ah, chonde pudu? A E anta, A E X plus three, A C is how much? X minus two, now, now we have to write. A D anta? X by, D B anta? X minus three equal to, A E is how much? X plus three by X minus. So if you multiply, what will come? X square minus, X square minus two X equal to X square minus nine. X square, X square cancel, so X equal to how much? Four point five, so option D is the right answer. Auna, right? Simply you have to remember which theorem? Basic proportionality theorem or Thales theorem, edanavukate. So that we have to remember, yipudu kutravali? In a triangle, parallel, when we have to remember, in a triangle, parallel. Right, then. Next one, see. In triangle A B C, F and E are two points on A B and A C respectively such that F E is parallel to B C. Again, in a triangle, parallel again, idi theram kutravali? Thales theorem you have to remember, what Thales theorem? In triangle A B C, in triangle A B C, F E is parallel to B C. F is a point on A B, ah, F is a point on A B. F E is parallel to B C such that F divides the triangle into two equal parts. Ante E part, E area one ante, E area kuda antundundi? One, and A D is perpendicular to B C. A D is perpendicular to B C. Idi perpendicular undi, idi kuda antundu, idi undu idi? Perpendicular e undu idi? Right, perpendicular to A C and A D intersects F E at G. Yekar intersect chendhi, G they can intersect chendhi. Then what is G D is two? Idi D ya, ah, A D, right? Then what is A, G D is two A G, G D is two A Z anta ratio la undu idi, anadutna? Right, now see. First, first point, two triangles, top triangle, bottom triangle, both are which triangles? Similar triangles, triangle F, A F E is similar to, triangle A F E is similar to triangle A B C. Top triangle, bottom triangle, both are which triangles? Similar triangles, basic proportional T theorem. Auna, right? If two triangles are similar, then sides ratios allow untai? A F by, A F, if A F by, A F E by A B C is how much? One is to one ratio la undi, one is to one ratio la, sorry, one is to one kada? One is to? Two ratio la una, auna? A F E one part idi, A B C nne partlu? Two parts, one is to two ratio la undi. But one is to two ratio la undi, if the areas are in the ratio of one is to root, one, one is to two, then sides are in the ratio of one by root two, ene chukundam kada? Similar to low, similar to low, if two triangles are similar, areas ratio is always equal to square of the corresponding sides ratio, ene chukundama? That is equal to F E by B C. F E by B C whole square, ene chukundangada? The areas ratio is always equal to square of the corresponding sides ratio. Ante implies, what is F E by B C? F E by B C antachindi? One by root two, so idi one part undi, idi antundundi? Root two part undundi? One by root two undundi? Ite manak adikada, manakavali? Heights kavali, height anta ratio la undi? What are the heights? So heights anta ratio la untai? If the, if the sides are in the ratio, yipudu chonde? The bases are in the ratio of one is to two, then heights are in the ratio, heights anta ratio la untai, ante? Adi kuda anta ratio la undi? One is to root, root two la undi ante? Idi one undi, idi one undi, idi antundundi? Root two undundi, aipendi? So one is to root two, so therefore what we are getting? A G is to G D, A G is to A D. A G is to A D is also in the ratio of one is to root two. A G no, A D kuda anta ratio la ne, one is to root two, kani vadu, adutundi ante? G D is to A Z. G D is to A G, ah, yipudu ikkada G D anta? Idi mattam one, i part ante, one ante, i part antautundi? Root two minus one, ante G D is how much? Root two minus one is to, what is A G? A G is how much? One, so it is in the ratio of root two minus one is to one. Anta ratio la undu idi? Root two minus one is to one, so option B is the right answer. So ikkada manav nejchukundi ante, basic proportional theorem as well as similarity theorem. Similarity theorem leyenchutundi? If areas are in the ratio, areas ratio is always equal to square of the corresponding sides ratio. So areas ratio one is to two undi, sides ratio la untai, one is to root two la untai. Ante kada, ene chukundam? If two triangles are similar, if the sides are in the ratio of one is to root two, altitudes also in the ratio of one is to root two ne? Medians also in the ratio of one is to root two, angular bisectors also in the ratio of one is to root two, ene chukundam? But if sides are in the ratio of one is to root two, angular bisectors also in the, sorry? Altitudes also in the ratio of one is to root two, altitudes kuda anta ratio la una, one is to root two. So altitudes la vadu, idina part anta ratio la undi? Root two minus one is to one part la undi, auna? Right. Then, next one, question number sixteen, sixteenth question. The ratio of the length of two equals eight and the third side of isosceles triangle are three is to four. It is a which triangle? Isosceles triangle. A B C is an isosceles triangle equals sides are three X, three X and non equal side is four X, right? If the area of the triangle is eighteen root five, what is the third side? So we have to find height, height find out chia. So this height kaval, so height, height changes, this is not only height, it is median kuda utundi? Isosceles triangle, so four X means this is how much? Two X and this is how much? Two X, right? Now tell me what is A D? So A C square equal to emosni? A D square plus D C square. That is what is A C square? Nine X square equal to H square plus D C square ante? Four X square, ante H equal to how much? Square root of nine X square minus four X square, that means or root five X. Auna? What is height? Height is how much? Or root five X, aipendi? So what is the area of the triangle? Area of the triangle is half into base into height. Area is given how much? What is area given? Eighteen root five is given, so what is the area given? Eighteen root five, so eighteen root five equal to one by two into base is how much? Four X, ante kada? Base is four X and height is how much? Or root five X. Root five, root five cancel, two ones, two twos, two ones, two nines. So that is X square equal to emochindi? Nine, X square equal to nine means X equal to how much? Three, X equal to three. So find the third side, what is the third side? Third side is, what is the third side? Third side is how much? Four X, so that is four into three is how much? Twelve, so what is the third side? The third side is exactly equal to how much? Twelve units, antundundi? Twelve units undundi, right? So yenge sami kanduchi, so isosceles triangle V C? So here we are observing a Pythagoras theorem, right? Okay, right angle triangle observed, observed chesam? So from that we are finding X value. Once you are getting X means automatic will, will, will get any side, A side karunda, side manav find out. Okay, right, then. Next one, question number seventeen, seventeenth question. Chonde, A B C is a trapezium and A D is parallel to B C. A D is parallel to B C. It is a trapezium. A D is parallel to B C, okay? A B C is a trapezium, E is a point on B C. E is a point on B C, right? Then what is the ratio of A B C D is to A E D? A E D, A B C D ratio anta, anadutna? Right, so dini yaka ratio alla undundi? So the height is the same, rendu ti yaka height is sameena? Now see, what is the area of trapezium? Area of trapezium, vesa dam directika? Area of trapezium, what area of trapezium? A B C D by area of A E D, A E D, right? What is area of trapezium? Half H into A plus B, that is half H into A, parallel sides. What are the parallel sides? A D plus B C by, what is the area of triangle? Triangle area is half into base into height. That is half into base, base is, what is the base? A D into height is H, so H H half of cancel, so what we are getting? A D plus B C by A D. So what is, we are getting? A D plus B C by A D, so option D is the right answer, okay? Simplega areas ratio, clearga diagram lo kana puduthana areas neetiga ikkada substitute chesam? Auna, right? Then, next one, question number eighteen. Chonde, if H C V are respectively the height, curved surface and volume of a circular cone, then what is three pi V H cube minus C square? H square plus nine V square, yemanadu? H means height, H and ante, height anta? And what is C? C and ante? Curved surface area, curved surface area, we call it as C. What is the curved surface area? Pi R L, what is the curved surface area of a try, of a cone? Pi R and V, what is volume? Volume yemanadu? V, V and ante, what is the volume of a cone? One by three pi R square H. Ite, what we have to find? Name find out chali? Three pi V H cube minus C square, H square plus nine V square. Idi manav find out chales. Auna? Now see, substitution ante, three into pi into, what is V? V and anta, what is V? V and eh? One by three pi R square H, right? One by three pi R square H into H cube, into H cube minus C square antadu? What is C square here? C square ante emothundi? Pi square, R square, L square, auna? Kani manak cone le tilso what we know? L square equal to H square plus R square anten, so we know? L square equal to H square plus R square auna? So in place of L square, what we can write? Pi square, R square into in place of L square. H square plus R square and right? In place of L square, we can write? Yeah, H square plus R square, now I am writing in place of C square, what I am writing? Pi square, R square into H square plus R square into H square plus nine into V square. What is V square? V ante, one by three pi R square H, so V square means? One by nine, pi square, R power four, H square. Auna? Right, now we have to simplify. Nine, nine cancel, three, three cancel, so pi square, R square, H power four minus pi square, R square. H square and H square, H power four minus pi square, R square, R square, R power four, H square plus pi square, R power four, H square. Now what happens? First two cancel, last two cancel and finally what we are getting? Zero is the right answer. De, yam chesedi yam ledu? Only thing, we have to substitute the formula. Neetiga manav formula ne substitute chesi, we have to simplify, midamining antala jagatga simplify cheshte? So what is answer we are getting? Zero, right? So option D is the right answer, okay? Right, then. Next one, see. If the base of a pyramid is an equilateral triangle, what is the pyramid? Equilateral triangular pyramids. So this is an equilateral triangle, one equilateral triangle, on that a pyramid is there. So bottom in equilateral triangle is there, these three are pyramids, right? So this is the equilateral triangle. Ikka de equilateral triangle undi? So pi na la pyramid undi, huh? Right, so pyramid is there. So pyramid, right? Ah, the equilateral triangle side is how much? Ten root three, yemichadu? Ten root three, then what is the total surface area of the pyramid? If the total surface area of the pyramid is two seventy root three, then its height is, what is the height? Anadutna? Right, yipu, ah, what is the total surface area? Bottom equilateral triangle undi? Sides e unai? Triangles are equilateral triangles, ananak tilid. Bottom is an equilateral triangle, we know, and sides are three, three triangles, both are same areas, right? So what is the total surface area? Now tell me, simple, what is the total surface area? Total surface area is area of equilateral triangle. Bottom is an area of equilateral, what is area of equilateral triangle? Root three by four, A square plus three into, how many triangles? Side, how many triangles are there? Three triangles are there, what is area of the triangle? Half into base into height, right? Now that total surface area is given how much? Two seventy root three equal to root three by four into A. What is the side? Side is how much? Ten root three, so ten root three into, ten root three in, ten root three plus one by two into base. E triangle yaka base anta A kada? Ante ten root three into height. What is the height? Height anta utundi ikkada? Slant height outundi ante, yellow outundi, auna kada? So pyramid loni illa, ide kada triangle? Ah, triangle yaka height emothundi ikkada? Slant height of the pyramid, so here? The height, height of triangle is equal to, the height of triangle is equal to slant height of pyramid. Pyramid yaka slant height outundi, auna kada? So just see, yipu chonde? Poka triangle illa undi, triangle thodi pyramid formi, ito formi, E triangle yaka height emothundi? What is the height? The height of the triangle is equal to slant height of the pyramid, so what is L? H, H emothundi? Yellow outundi, slant height of the pyramid outundi, auna? So from here we have to find? Ah, engka madu yachu? Root three, root three, root three cancel, so fives, fives, right? Two ones, two fives. So ikkada emochindi? Two seventy equal to twenty five, three sir? Seventy five plus five L. Ante five L equal to how much? Two seventy minus seventy five is how much? One ninety five, so L equal to how much? L antosundi? Five ones, five one, sorry. Ante na five amigla inda? All right, ah. Five three sir? Sorry, pinda, okamish? So two seventy chada, two seventy root three, two seventy root three. Or root three by four is for ten into ten, so two, the hundred twenty five, twenty five into root three. Twenty five, twenty five, three sir? Seventy five, one ninety five equal to here? Ah, right? Ikka de okka three machpanju sarah? So three, so three into half into base into height, ante kana antosundi? Fifteen yellow chindi? On fifteen, that cancel just fifteen ones, fifteen threes. So L equal to how much? Thirteen chindi, what we are getting? Thirteen, L thirteen chindi? So L thirteen, we are getting L thirteen, then what is the height? The height anta, anadutna? So height find out chali ante, yipudu chonde? Ikka da? So okka prism, so prism form utundi? Ikka prism form utundi ante, height illa drop utundi, chonde? Yipudu illa height drop utundi? If you, Ila height drop out and the, so okay, height and the, drop out and they, the point here, that we call it as median. Are they what is the, a point, they what is the median and here it forms a right angle triangle, it coulda form out and the. Okay, right angle, triangle, don't be the, thirteen, actually, thirteen, and my tell, immediate, five, twelve, thirteen is the combination. So directly we can mark it, twelve is the right answer, twelve, even though we will see. My key base five or Kada, my tell you, Kada, and they, ah, radius and the, I can not put it, I in radius and the, and they, what is in radius formula? A by two root three, that is ten by two root three and exactly, five, exactly, right angle, triangle, part and the five, exactly. Automatically H equal to how much? Twelve, height, twelve, so what is the height of the pyramid? So assumption, three diagram, three dimension, resume change, you resume just, okay, height, Kana, drop just, drop a point, equilateral triangle, always. Correct, the centroid place, centroid, nah, incentron, nah, eccentric, sorry, yeah, the circumcentron, everything is same for equilateral triangle. So automatically, kind of, part, in center, equal on, so in center formula, A by two root, and they. That is exactly, that length is exactly equal to how much? Five equal out and the, but if five thirteen, they will say automatically, what is the height? Height is how much? Twelve, follow, right, next one, question number twenty. The pyramid of a semicircle is numerically equal to its area, what is the pyramid of a semicircle? Thirty six by seven R, right? The pyramid of a circle, semicircle is thirty six by seven, is numerically equal to area, what is area? One by two pi R square, then what is the diameter? Very simple, so thirty six by seven, one R, one R cancel, one thirty six by seven equal to. One by two into twenty two by seven into R, now seven, seven cancel, two ones, two eleven. So what is R, R equal to how much? Thirty six by eleven, but he is asking diameter, so what is diameter? Seventy two by eleven, so what is the diameter of the semicircle? The diameter of the semicircle is seventy two by eleven, that means six and six by eleven, they got, sixty six plus seven, that is seventy two by eleven. So option C is the right answer, okay? So these are the questions we are discussing in session two, session two low. So what we discussing, my, discuss just, and the, five one, and the tire one, C G L as well as C H S L target, target just. Yes, type of questions, so, and I, observe just, the, based below, my questions, right? So this is about the session two and in next session, again some more questions we will discuss, right? Thank you.